...7:30 too.
Being that it is 7:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the borough mechanicsburg to order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the heart of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we do roll call, I'd like to announce that council had an executive session on June the 15th on two matters, one of personnel and one of real estate with no action taken. And we will be following receiving this meeting with an executive session on personnel, item of personnel with possible action taken. Alright, so at that, we will do roll call.
President Webber?
I'm here.
Vice Speaker Nadel.
Here.
Councilman Manigal?
Yes.
Councilman Anthony?
Here.
Councilman Lucas?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Mr. Akatsky?
President.
Chief Mike?
Here.
Chief Ness?
Here.
EMT Wardle?
Here.
Manager Saberkey?
Here.
Mr. Manager Boyer?
Here.
We have four.
Thank you very much. I understand Dr. Drake is here on the downtown mechanicsburg partnership and are there any other guests? Yes, Mr. Phelan would like to speak. Okay, great. Alright, so what else?
You want me to go first and then get that later? Well, thank you for allowing me to come speak to you tonight. It's been awhile since the downtown mechanicsburg partnership has come to visit you to bring you up to record on where we are with the renovation mechanicsburg revitalization process. So, that is why I'm here tonight, to fill you in and talk a little bit about where we are in the process. As many of you may know, we have, we meeting the partnership has purchased, well, we're settling on the new property, one of us named Street Center Square on or before September 8th. We currently have September 8th as our settlement date with the Pecker brothers who currently on the building requesting an early settlement date. We'll see if that happens, but we're thrilled to be able to move forward with our project ahead of schedule. The groundbreaking ceremony for this civic soul of the community, the hearts of mechanicsburg, is going to be held on September 18th, Saturday, September 18th. Each one of you here will be receiving a personal invitation from the partnership to attend. I hope you'll be able to do that. We're looking forward to seeing you all there. It's going to be a very interesting and fun ceremony. We were, we sort of planning it to be that way. We have, at this point, received, as many of you know, unanimous approval from the borough for moving forward with this project, as we have from the planning commission from HARB. And just wanted to say, as we pledged back in 2017, 2018, we, our pledge to you was that we would continue to work with you in a cooperative way. We will not go rogue on you. This is a cooperative venture, for sure. And we want you to know that we will be at your side and you at ours every step of this process. So, um, let me, let me just say also to bring you again up to speed, Roger and the owner of the demolition company, one of our major donors, Councilman Anthony, went to the site on the 29th of June, I believe it was Roger, and looked at the scope, the nature, the logistics, any issues related to the demolition of the, of the area itself, that plot at one of us name. Do you, is there anything you want to add to that, Roger, that would be relevant at this point?
No, I think we, we hit a lot of topics. Most of the topics dealt with logistics of the site and the difficulty that the contractor was going to have with that site. The demolition engineer was well aware of those site, those issues, and the contractor that was there, him, seemed to have a pretty good plan, solid plan to go forward with that. There are a couple borough trees there that I think that we're going to need to address whenever the building's gone. From a logistics standpoint, it's going to be easier to handle those trees whenever the building's not there compared to when it is there. A lot more room to work safely, so. But I think, I did reiterate that it is a very visible corner and it is at the intersection of two state roads and people will be watching what's going on in that corner and probably reporting it if they see something they don't understand or at least giving us a call. And I think it was best, I think what we finally came to the whole thing was, as long as we're all on the same page, I think it should go pretty smoothly and proceed without too many problems with tearing the building down.
Is there a basement in that building?
No, no.
Alright, thank you for that. Was anything else thrown that, as an observation from that visit?
No, that was a great meeting.
Yeah, that was a great meeting, so I really, really appreciated you being here, Roger. I think that meant everything to the folks that were there, so I appreciate that, thank you. So, what I would like to do this evening is just take a few minutes of your time to catch you up on what this plan looks like in its concept stage. When I say concept, I probably, I mean, probably the penultimate form of the center square design will, you will see here in this image and in this, in this PowerPoint. So, let's just go through it, Roger and Bill. We'll take a look at what we see here. First, our mission, you guys know our mission, it's to make those community connections. And anything that we do to preserve the history and the culture of downtown mechanicsburg rebounds to our businesses, this is what we do, this is why we do it. We want to develop mechanicsburg into a destination, we want to make it a more walkable community, one that attracts people to what we do. And by way of a footnote, I had a, I was on a webinar, really speakers of the webinar recently, of downtown mechanicsburg partnership type managers from across the state of Pennsylvania and some borough managers included in that as well. And the single most challenging issues facing them today are two. One is how do you attract people into the downtown? That's where your bread and butter is and that's where attention and rise and fall is in the people that you attract to the town. And they were all quite, quite confident in that, that if they can continue to find ways to bring people into the downtown, their downtown should thrive. And the second issue to a borough, to a town, was consistently parking. And it's not the parking that you might think, that is, it wasn't the lack of parking, it was the perception that there's a lack of parking. I don't know if you remember when I was here, it was the number four in my life, I was here in front of you and I was poking my finger at you and said, "Don't tell me ever again that there was a parking problem in mechanicsburg." There is no parking problem in mechanicsburg, it is a perception problem. So, and even people, even councils have parking garages that were halfway, were saying that they had parking problems because that was the perception. So, in any case, one of the important things is that quote that you see in front of you, that streets do have this, this way of communicating a history's culture, its values, its assets. That's why it's, what we're doing is so important. What is it we want to say about who we are now as we move into the future? What did those folks 100 or 200 years ago when these streets were first laid out, what was their message to us? And what do we want to pass on to the future? I think these are important ideas for us to consider. Now, as you look at the next slide, we thought we would show you a little bit about the way it looked about 100 or more years ago, with Franklin Hall standing where PNC now stands and where the West Side Methodist church was up until 1954, from 1854 to 1954. And then now, you see what I like to call the stupid building, the law hut, which is that one story out of place building that stands where that church used to be. I, the original landowner wanted that for always and forever, that spot where the law hut is, to be a park for the enjoyment of the citizens of mechanicsburg. It never happened. So, guess what? 200 years later, we're making it happen. So, here, what you see here is a bird's eye view of what that center square concept study looks like. You can see, obviously, the church is gone, the stupid building is gone, the trees are gone, those big honking trees at the front of the property. And maybe if you can take it down to the next level, Roger, we're going to drop it down to the top of Citizens Bank. So, pretend we're standing on top of the clock at Citizens Bank. What you see is on your right, there's going to be a vendor, a permanently placed vendor station, that's going to be then, as you look toward the center of the center square, you walk through an entryway with, center square in iron over the top of those columns, places for seating for that vendor. This will be a vendor station that will, can be used generically by a number of different restaurants and others in town. The center of the square itself, reminiscent of the wagon wheel days of mechanicsburg when that was, who we are, what we do and how we identify ourselves. And then as you move farther back, you see a stage, this is going to be a fully operational state of the art stage for outdoor concerts, for ceremonies and other venues in the downtown. The green areas that you see will be seating wall level and then on the right beside the Haslett and Hershey Bible Store is a green wall that will serve a number of purposes. Obviously, it would be sustainable and, and green, but, and it will also protect the view and enhance the view. And then here is a street level view of that, of center square. This is where we are focusing our initial energy and our time with the center square. If you look to the right, you see a man standing there. See, I really think that's scary, I'm not sure. However, I think the person right in the middle is there, that you said? Not sure. And anyway, that gives you a kind of a better sense of what are those we're trying to achieve? A multi-use, multi-dimensional, multi-historic, multi-multi-multi-space for the use and enjoyment of the citizens of mechanicsburg and as a way to attract people in. So, before we leave this, I would just ask you, see if you can imagine having lights run across that area and having dinner under the stars. Doesn't that sound like a neat thing to do? We'd have a live band or some appropriate music playing on the amphitheater stage and it becomes a real attraction, a real gathering, true gathering place for citizens of mechanicsburg and the area. And at the next slide, you're going to see kind of a Plan A, 1A of the, the project as well. What you see in front of you is on the right is PNC Bank and you see a guy in a white shirt walking into the, into PNC. I'm sure that's Mayor Ritter. We've kind of done that guy, Mayor Ritter, in any case. Are you smiling? Smile, I'll take that. This is right ahead of you, the fountain that now resides behind Union Church. We are hopeful that that fountain can move from behind Union Church and come out to the square where it once stood back in, at the turn of the century. In 1907, the Women's Club of Mechanicsburg put it right about where that bus stop is that you see with the arced roof. And we'd like to bring that out as another one of those elements of preserving what was a very different and a very rich past for mechanicsburg. And you can see to the right of the fountain, what look at little pedestals, that is what we're calling the Walk of History. There, we're envisioning now, we'll see what technology tells us when we're ready to do this, but we're envisioning now maybe six or seven stations where people can stop and learn about the history and the culture of mechanicsburg. These will be interactive, technology-rich devices that people can use to, to engage videos, music and other elements that will help bring the history of this area alive. And I think for, for my money, mechanicsburg has extraordinarily rich history that we need to, to promote in that way. So, then you get a different view of the Walk of History there with that open green space. The flag, flagpole that you see there will be to honor our various armed service units. So, that very kind of quick, fast and dirty look at what we're envisioning for the downtown center square area. This is what I like to call, and what the partnership likes to call, the civic soul of the community. This is the heart of mechanicsburg. We've got to do this right. So, we're really interested in engaging with you to make sure we get it right. But to do it right and to do it well is our goal. So, with that having been said, I know I'm taking maybe a few more minutes of your time than I intended, but I hope this gives you a good sense of where we are and what we intend to do as we move forward. Should I ask if there are any questions? Are there any questions?
I have one question.
That is there?
Yeah, so the perception of parking, are you going to include that in the first phase? Like, how to judge that?
We can certainly do that. The original plan we have is in three phases, center square, main street and then railroad avenue, which will become railroad walk. And one of the elements of the main street section of the revitalization is awesome signage, awesome, not just the little blue sign with a P on it. We want to do something that directs people to real places to park. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Very informative, we appreciate it. Phelan, are you? Want you to speak?
Hi, my name is Richard Keely. I've actually been in business here since official opening day, March 26, 1973, thanks to the mechanicsburg club. I lived on that west street. I was a teenage club owner, had my own teenage club up in Front Street called The Barn, operated there for three years. Then I opened up what was called The Raven, social club of Sledar Township, actually it was Lower Sledar Township. And from there, I started attracting all the main attractions in the country, from all the big acts, all the Motown acts, Motown, the band, all of them. The only act I never had from Motown was The Supremes and of course, Michael was before my days, nobody got Michael. But I, I've had all the Motown acts numerous times at The Raven. And then it mushroomed to where I started doing concerts. I'm the first one to book, I mean promote it, thank goodness. I'm the first one to bring the Rolling Stones to the United States. I drove to Harrisburg, Prince of England, can look to North and Google, lost money, it was horrible. But I drove an English model automobile called a Mordi. And when we were building Chambersburg, which was the fourth gingerbread man west street, I'm sorry, third in Chambersburg, my wife was hit in the back and all the paint and the car got damaged. So, there's about five or six hours difference in our time and England's time. So, my car was made in Melbourne, Link in, in the UK. It was a Mordi, two seater at the time, I had three of them. But anyways, so I would call over here and talk to the side when I could talk to them. There were no facts, there were no cells. I didn't even know why we ever got a phone call. If you think about it, you had to be home and Ben Hything was a party line, there was three other people that talked in the car. Okay, so anyways, I would call him, and we'd be talking, what are you doing? And I said, "Well, I have a club and this and that." And he says, "But at night, I promote acts and I get some of the best ones here. And you know, as a promoter, if you bring in the act team to the United States, whenever they come back, you get three dates each year when they come back." So, it's really a big bonus for you to promote it. So, I go and I, I said, "Okay, who are you talking about?" Now, I'm doing all the entertainment, the F and M college, all the entertainment at PUP now, I mean paternity, right on up to the president's selection for university. And so, I'm doing it, mainly William Honey, it was his name, Bill Honey, he was older than me, great man from Philadelphia, big time booking agent. We had F and M college. So, this guy said, "Well, I have this act that's going to get big and it's going to be real great." And I said, "What's that?" He said, "Alton John." I said, "Never heard of it." "I didn't hear of it." "Didn't hear about it." But I said, "I've heard of it." Don't remember what you were telling me, because you told me about the Rolling Stones, you know, and I knew about that. So, I booked him and they were booked for F and M college, it was totally sold out, he became big by that time. And lo and behold, we get a phone call from Wayne Mars, said, "Dick, we got a problem." I said, "What's that?" "We got it canceled." I said, "Why?" I said, "You know it sold out, this is thirsty." Now, you didn't have, like I said, cell phones and stuff like that. So, I said, "Okay, tell me what it is." And they said, "He has a chance to go in, Bill Sullivan." And Sullivan never wants anybody second, they're wanting birth. And you know what you have to do, don't you, Dick? Me, if I say no and make a problem with it, I get no more acts. But anyways, I'm making two all in entertainment. But anyways, so that's why I brought Alton John, I brought The Hiddens, all of them to Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I brought Alton John here on the number one song in the world for rock and crack of that rock. Think about the date I had, Wednesday night, the day before Thanksgiving, and we just sold 33,000. Most people are there in front showing 33,000. I'm here to talk to you about my main lot, that's the gingerbread man. I opened up 19 total gingerbread man west streets, 17 in Pennsylvania, two in Maryland. The one I opened first was a running railroad out of it. When I decided to step down and turn things over to my kids, I wanted each of my kids to have three west street. They only each wanted two. They couldn't imagine running three. I was running, actually I had 30 west street at one time, all with liquor licenses. So, anyways, I decided to give so many, turn things over and they had to be approved by the turnover, they would make payments to me each month and they'd turn them over. And I did the right thing, I treated my son-in-law as my son and my daughter-in-law as my daughter, I wouldn't have done it again. It was a wrong mistake, I shouldn't have done it. So, we basically lost control when they turned them over of the liquor license. So, my daughter and son-in-law went through a divorce and the last month of their operation is here in July, the west street's closed now because they're cleaning things up to have an auction and sale. And you can't get around Jane, Pam, Jason and Rebecca without having the love for Cumberland County and, and mechanicsburg. Now, at one time, I did do my dues in Cumberland County. I had gingerbread man Riverside, I had the first gingerbread man, the second gingerbread man, I had five places in Coral Isle all at the same time. Gingerbread man, Roger Osterpenny, Beth Fluddies, Alvin McDuff's and the Royal Room. But I also owned one in Cumberland County, Rebecca, that was in Shippensburg. I did do Shippensburg, that's Franklin County, but I did a lot here in Cumberland County. I'm a downtown man. I'm a concept designer by trade. I changed all of mine, but boy was I lucky, my brother could. So, we did all our own designs. I'm here to tell you that Rebecca and I met and talked, she put her shadow, I put my shadow on her, and she's considering offering me a Cumberland County industrial development license. It has certain rules and regulations, you have to have 51% sales in food, 39% in alcohol or other items. And I've taken that up and I've already retained an attorney from Tupperware on board to represent me, Mr. Papas, and I'm applying for that. I'm here just to tell you, my friend, this has not been accepted, successful, and it's a procedure and I have to go through. But I just wanted, first thing I did was go see the man. I met with Jack and his wife for a half hour. I wanted them to know my plan so you know what I'm trying to do. I want to bring it back to what it was when we used to have the Oktoberfest and the Canadian Air Festivals and the British pub crawls, our kitchen was open till midnight and we served food, we had lunch people, dinner people, we had pasta night. I'm going to come back and do that again. Now, in February, seven and a half years old, I just lost my wife for 55 plus years in March 28th. So, I live upstairs in the building, the building I've been passing around, that you haven't seen it, I have seven apartments above that building. I've assessed two of them, the other ones are at the insurance, I've got no insurance. And then I, I just want to let you see the quality of, not in that building, the sprinkle. We had to do that in, when we came here, when I bought it from Sinclair. And the sprinkle, the storage sprinkle has the best smoke alarm, everything in there and it's very nice building. And my apartments are totally furnished, I do them up, I have no living room, I mean, you get everything when you move in my apartments. I supply sheets, towels, vacuum cleaner, we're dumping the mowers, TVs, granite top counters, power places, and there's all new stainless steel appliances. Let me just inspect it and of course, he said, he thinks of the newest apartments in the borough. I detailed it, I haven't been in the law. But anyways, I want to let you know, I'm taking you to the building, I'm living in apartment number six, myself and I plan on being there. So, this is my project, I'm here to just inform you, I'm also going to ask you possibly no commitment from you, for your support in what I'm trying to do. Because I have so many other things that I know are the right things for mechanicsburg. You know, people, you are, you have the probably best job here in all central Pennsylvania. You're hard to ask, true. Because of my time in entertainment, my other idea to the ladies, when you're around strong ladies like this, you can only be proud to do more, is that mechanicsburg should become the entertainment center. The first time I met Chicago, they were playing three horns outside in Chicago. I'm talking the group Chicago, trombone, trumpet, saxophone. Playing out front of the place, I was a booking agent, I had groups up and performing, so. Listen, man, these guys are awesome. They were out, they had a thing here, saxophone case or something, put your money in, just like street performers. Okay, now that, and then when I went up to them and I spoke to them, because I've booked colleges, I said, "What's the name they're with?" They said, "We're a big deal." That's actually their first name, the big deal. And anyways, what I'm trying to say to you is, Chicago went from that to CTA to the group Chicago. And I performed and promoted them more than anybody else. Chicago, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, a lot of those acts, Diddy Brothers, I did them all and I did them a lot. But what I'm trying to say to you is, that act where out front of that place became Chicago. Well, we have Teenage League, we have Little League, we have Bunny League, we have American Legion, we have the greatest twilight program in the area with Bill Witten involved, but I'm saying, I think mechanicsburg could be where people get a chance to come out and play their violin or dance or do comedy and get their starts. Because you know, if you're a brewer and you're in ninth grade and you want to be a dancer or a performer, it's a little difficult. Now, we got everything from all the sports and that's fair, breweries and bars, but I'm saying, so I visualize mechanicsburg- But I'm saying, so I visualize Mechanicsburg of, well, I can do my place if I get a little approval. I'm gonna have electrical operators there, not just for Jubilee Day, but for uh, action promoting performance. You have seven in a spot. You've got Camp Hill, Runesburg, LeMourne, to your east. You've got to the, to the, to the south. You still, you have all of that there, Dopeburg, that area, Carlisle, uh, Albus, Newville. We're right in the center of where it could be something. And I'm just here to tell you, I'm making a part of it. I need to get my gingerbread man back up and operating. I need to uh, re-furnish it, repaint it, re-clean it all up, get it all done. And I'm just here to tell you what I plan to do. I hope I get your support. And really, thank you for just letting me walk in. I didn't know until, I was having lunch with the girls today, talking about Mechanicsburg and they told me this borough council meeting. Cause I wanted to see the man first and tell him, cause he's my lawyer this way here. Thank you.
All I can say is if we all had that amount of passion, we'd be good enough. Thanks so much. All right, uh, that concludes the guest portion of the evening's meeting. We now come to that portion of the meeting where citizens are able to make comments and requests. If you are person who wants to do so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and uh, let us know what's on your mind. Do you have anyone?
I'd like to come up.
Sure.
You can drop the cups while the crowd happens. Um, my name is Jenna Monowski, eight oh seven North Arch Street. Um, I'm here a couple weeks ago for the borough council meeting. And uh, Mr. Anthony mentioned uh, the issue with the streets, Main Street and Walnut with the trees. And ever since then, I've kind of been paying attention as I'm driving around the borough of other um, impediments to driving. My son is a new driver, he has his permit, he's driving around the borough. And there are a lot of times where he is unable to see where he's, as he's moving into traffic. Um, specifically, uh, I don't know the name of the street, York Circle, there's that one right in the middle. Um, it's not in the main street, it crosses over um, to one fourteen towards Pleasant View Park. And there is a huge shrub there that he has to almost go um, up to the white line to see traffic coming outside, uh, out of town. And a lot of times, if there are people turning left to go towards Pleasant View Park, people behind him will whip around. And if he's edging forward, if I'm edging forward, there's a potential for an accident because this um, shrub is, is obscuring the view. Um, there are a number of other places around the borough where I think this is, is happening. Um, obviously careful drivers, you can avoid an accident, but a lot of times um, you're not aware of coming, oncoming traffic. Um, so I don't know if there is plans to have somebody go around the borough and see where um, trees and, and shrubs are blocking uh, turns into major lines of traffic or not. So that's all I wanted to mention.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll certainly take your comments under advisement. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, I have to be here again. It's not something I like to do. Now, first, let's get with that.
May I have a question for a second?
Okay. Howard Getman, one, two, two, six, close job in Mechanicsburg.
Thank you very much, Mr. Getman.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank the uh, Mechanicsburg Police Department for the help uh, they gave me in locating my little doggy. Uh, I thank them for that. And unfortunately, that's the good stuff. Now, okay, I have a question for you, Mr. Ritter. Uh, first of all, like, why have you shut Mechanicsburg down for every year? Like, I can't even get in here to pay my bills. We're no meetings except for Zoom meetings, which, you know, hey. It's no fun to sit at home and uh, wait for fourteen calls to uh, go through before you get to talk. So, you know, uh, I have a question, like, why do you close uh, government down for every year?
Are you, are you asking for a response immediately?
Yeah, like um.
Covid nineteen.
Okay, now, okay, Mechanicsburg closed down. But the hardware store, hardware store you run are, I don't know, stay open or?
I don't know the hardware store.
Oh, it's Swedish hardware store, these, these?
That would be that.
Oh, yeah, okay. So he's a contractor?
No, he's the man.
Oh, okay, sorry. I mean, I thought you were Mr. Ritter, I apologize. But at any rate, why, why do Mechanicsburg close down and the hardware stores stay open?
Open masks up, open masks up.
Yeah, well, certainly the uh, officer in Mechanicsburg could have fallen under the same criteria, could have not.
Well, we learned something, excuse me, if I can answer this. Uh, the Borough Office was not set up to handle quarantine and to keep the ladies safe at work in front of us. Uh, with the mask, even with the mask mandate in place, the amount of people that come in and out of this office, it would have meant we were disinfecting this office. Every time somebody come in and out. That's the reason why the Borough Office was closed, the same as, the same as Hampton Township, Silver Spring Township, Upper Island, Lower Island. All, and, and the county closed. I mean, the county closed the courthouse, all court days were suspended. Chief Myers can also attest to that. All right? We got open as soon as we could get open in here and do it safely.
Well, it's, okay. Uh, the question I have is, like, there are no provisions in uh, hardware store and Mechanicsburg that set masks. Here, we have plexiglass dividers and everything.
Where did you put those in, sir? They were put in, those were put in in April, in uh, June of last year, in an attempt to open up. And that's when the Covid cases were kept going up and before all the vaccines were out. And the ladies were working from home, they were answering phones from home. There was drop box out front to pay the bills. Accommodations were made, we put a doorbell out front, there was someone in this office. If you would have come in and rang the doorbell, we would have taken your payment and taken care of business.
Yeah, I know, uh, call in advance. Um, okay, just, just a little hit, maybe in the future, if this happens again, maybe you put a little self-addressed envelope, but all you have to do is put a stamp on it?
We're actually, under the name of the business tonight, I've got a, a system that I'm gonna discuss with council to see if there's any interest in going forward with it. It's actually a drive-up, walk-up kiosk that we put out front of the building. So that you can come in, scan your, scan your bill, uh, with the bar total on the bottom of it and make your payment right there. Without ever having to come into the office and deal with other people.
Yeah, if you set an envelope like everybody else did, nobody'd have to come in anyway. You know, unless they wanted to. Um, okay. Uh, not much of an answer, but, okay, I guess I'm just gonna have a little bit of time.
Huh? I may have to interrupt one more time.
Okay.
This is a comment section of the meeting, not a question and answer section. So if you have a comment to make, we'll take your advisement and then if there's discussion needed, we'll contact you.
Okay, well, let's get back to uh, okay, I really have a comment for you. Uh, the street light across from my house at the corner of uh, Grace Drive and uh, State Road and Sinclair Road, whichever you prefer. Uh, now, that's been out since November before the pandemic. And, you know, that's kind of like a dangerous intersection to begin with, cause you've got a corner there that there's a stop sign, but you don't have to stop if you're going around the corner. But a lot of people decide to go straight there and decide not to stop either. But, you know, that's, that's been out since before the pandemic. When my car was sitting in front of my house, I pointed that out to the responding officer. Uh, that's been six months ago. Nothing's been done. Now, I don't know, maybe there's uh, some reason intentionally me out, you know? But I just, I'm just wondering that, you know, there's definitely a safety concern there, cause it's a corner and if they go straight, they're gonna end up in somebody's front yard, if not their house. You know, now there's, they've grown trees in front of that house, probably for that same reason. But, you know, I think we should at least take care of the street light, you know? I don't know how hard that is or if it's a state matter or uh, you know, I don't know who's responsible for that particular street light. But obviously, here in Mechanicsburg, nobody's responsible for it. Okay, that's my comment on that. Now, the incident of two twelve twenty, which we talked about before, when I went upstairs to get my dog license, uh, and complained about the lack of uh, uh, interface with uh, Carlisle computer, uh, where it could have been so simple to take care of. Uh, first of all, there was no reason to escalate the situation. I was trying to leave through the elevator, but, you know, for some reason, elevator didn't seem to function properly. And then the next morning, there was a police officer on this side and we started to argue a little bit. And next morning, we were two on the other side. Now, according to uh, the commissioner, the, the uh, camera in the lobby doesn't record. Uh, now, unfortunately, I can't, I can't, you know, like, I can't know why that is right now, cause it's not a question and answer session. So I'd like to comment on that and like, if you wanna send me a letter or give me a phone call, you can uh, do so and explain that to me and uh, you know. Now, I put up a camera that doesn't record. That sounds awful hokey to me. Maybe it's something that's recorded on that camera that, you know, you don't want citizens to see. Um, okay. And uh, we talked about, you know, truthfulness. Um, and I was gonna ask about uh, the county court and the baits agreement, cause uh, I had an incident with uh, Crosswalk Safety Patrol years ago. Unfortunately, I was adjudicated in real court, uh, the court of uh, the district justice over there, Mark Martin. Like, that would have been something I'd expect to find in like uh, North Korea or China or something, maybe Russia. But, you know, it is what it is. Maybe you guys can fix it or not. Uh, that's my comment on that. And I have one more comment. Instead of having this money on uh, still in Mechanicsburg, which we found an infrastructure, I believe, like, maybe we should think about fixing roads that we already have to drive on. Like, I'm talking Church Road, I think that's uh, Pleasant, Pleasant, Pleasant Road or something. Uh, one that goes uh, past Trinket Stains and stuff and over the railway tracks. Uh, maybe it's called Mober, and I've driven that road so many times, I don't even remember the name of it. But at any rate, all the roads in that area of town mean extensive work. Now, Grace Drive is a result of uh, the three sewer we got from uh, Silver Springs. You know, where, you know, hey, you guys have the right to come in and uh, tear up my uh, driveway apron without telling me. Tear the trench down, well, actually undermine a section of my sidewalk where you can see the sidewalk and see daylight on one side and daylight on the other side. Now, with that sidewalk thickened, nobody wants to take responsibility. Nobody wants to take responsibility for the hours of job they did replacing my driveway apron. Uh, and I've never seen paper in one that told me they were gonna dig up my, the area between the sidewalk and the curb. And uh, you know, I'm s- I'm the one that, you know, I'm the one that has to eventually probably take care of the damages. And, you know, it's, it's ridiculous. I've complained, uh, numerous people here. I even called when it happened, it's been ten years, ten years now anyway. And, you know, they get, they sent out a letter. I called his owner and he said he was gonna stop, and they did. So, okay, those are my comments. Unfortunately, we don't get any answers. Now, one, one thing, you know, we need transparency, you know? Our freedoms and democracy will perish in the dark. That, that is my, that's my last comment. Thank you very much.
Good, why don't you move?
I'm on, I'm on, right now.
Are there any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on with the meeting. Is there any correspondence, Mr. Sitter?
I have no correspondence, sir.
Thank you. We need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Vayner, two, is there a second?
Twelve seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any additions, revisions or corrections to the minutes?
Uh, they said my uh, my reports were attached, but they were not uh, attached, that is all. Um, for my uh, my.
You did submit them, but I don't think they got attached for the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I think that was what they meant by attached.
Attached.
Everybody okay with that, everyone?
Okay.
It's okay, good. All right, this is uh, Martin.
Yeah.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the video.
I'm gonna say, because I was not at the meeting.
All right, engineer's report. I'm just an engineer.
Engineer Volki is in Florida, South Side.
Oh, that's right.
And he's also preparing for hurricane relief.
Well, we've given our five prayers in that horrible situation. He called all those. He does. All right, community liaison reports, uh, downtown partnership, we've since we've already had a report this evening, I think that will go to that. Um, libraries, tell them, the library is proud to announce that almost all the programs for adults have resumed for any person uh, being at the library. The one exception is the trivia contest they have each month. They're gonna continue to do that on Zoom. And on July twenty-fourth, from six to eight, uh, the trivia will be, the, the uh, subject will be, are you smarter than a fifth grader? Um, the Friends dineouts, uh, indeed are dineouts where uh, proceeds received by the restaurant west in go to the Friends of Mechanicsburg Library. And this one, Snappers, is the uh, restaurant that's helping out the Friends. And that's gonna be Wednesday, July fourteenth, from eleven to nine P M. Now, they did not announce a percentage of how much will go toward the library, but a percentage of each meal purchased, not including alcohol, will go toward the uh, Friends of Mechanicsburg Library. Now, of course, you would usually must have a, a flyer to uh, to help the library out. And you can pick them up at the library or get them online. Um, this month, you may wanna register if you're interested for the fifteenth annual library run for reading. It's being held on August seventh, but they're already accepting uh, registration now. And uh, if you register early, before the twenty-fifth of this month, you're still eligible to get a T-shirt if you order one and for a lower registration price. Uh, but you can register up till the day of the race, but it's a little bit more expensive. You can register online. There are prizes for all the on-scene participants. The interesting thing about this year's run for reading is that you can also do it virtually and still uh, help support the library. Um, and you can go online to read how that's done if you'd like. Uh, the library is also limiting their hours from now until September on Saturdays from ten in the morning till two in the afternoon. And uh, that's all I have. Very good, thank you. Um, museum association, uh, no report this time. Uh, we'll go now to the downtown program service manager, Rebecca here.
Good evening, everyone, good to see you, and I mean, really see you live in person. The whole topic of my report, I have two extras to see. The only copy of my report, I have two extras, just someone in the audience would like one. I'm gonna start with, uh, about space. Last month, we talked a little bit about the project at two forty-three, two forty-five East Main Street. This is the property that keeps getting hit by the trucks that Mark and Lori Walker, uh, owned. The Harb mat, we've talked with some of you about that meeting, the Harb approved their request with some stipulations of items that they needed to tender before advancing. Um, walkers were, uh, wow, Roger, which word do I use here? They were, um, a little concerned with that outcome and decided to, uh, instead repair the awning. They have since, after some consolent, decided that they will revisit the, the larger project to remove the overhang and, and, uh, change the siding on the first floor and other things. No repair work has been done yet, and we're still talking, we're still looking to come up with some, some simple drawings and a list of the materials that would be used. So, uh, either it's happened yet, we're still working through it, but I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll have a solution we can all be, uh, pleased with. The owner of Kite Tail's Weaving, which is the business at the corner that gets hit, Tara Kylie Rothwell passed away a week ago. Prior to her death, she was working on continuing the weaving business in the brewery art studio at that location, and those discussions continued, so, uh, that would be nice to see. Asma Amadi is the lady that owns Asma Gifts, and she is retiring, and that business is closing, so she's having an inventory reduction sale right now. Kanagawa Japanese Restaurant opens tomorrow. You heard from Mr. Phelan. Mr. Phelan, um, I met him last week as someone who was going through the building, interested in, uh, purchasing, purchasing the building, which is not for sale. And, um, I would talk a little bit about the first floor location and all. We had a very entertaining night, it was about two and a half hours long, enjoyed every minute of it, and then I received a phone call the next morning from Mr. Phelan telling me that, uh, had a little changing plan. So you've heard a lot about that here tonight. Also, he has been talking with a business in Hanover that was looking for a third location and had mechanics firm in mind. So, there's some things that are opening up, there's some things that are already open, we're gonna see, I expect, some changing of the seats. That might provide an opportunity for that brewery to come to downtown. Had someone who went through the Two Value Hardware property the other day as well. Uh, it's good that we have added interest in that. And Charlie DeRica, who's been with Nigel's Barbershop for many, many, many years, is retiring at the end of September, so that business will be for sale. You know that the, uh, building is for sale as well. Speaking of sale, the Kansas City Volunteer Fire Department purchased the property, I'm looking up, purchased the property next to the fire company at York and Simpson Street to, uh, to work as part of their campus for the consolidated fire company. Appreciate your remarks related to Delicia, that really was a wonderful event, and I think that sets a very high and perfectly doable, uh, standard for all heavy lifting in the future. It was really a, a great project, and we appreciated all the support that, um, everyone, top to bottom, inside and out in the borough and the, the community went to that project. McCandlessborough was mentioned in the last issue of Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs magazine, and that was for stormwater management project, nice picture and all in there. I am waiting only to hear from Jeannie Capello as to when she can sign papers for the Frankenberger Tavern easement. We've just been waiting for that. I've been calling, I'm writing, I'm begging, I'm pleading, uh, she is away an awful lot, and I think that's the only, I know that's the only holdup. Very soon we'll be making our announcement for the twenty, twenty-two to the development block grant funds, so we'll set up some projects to submit for that. And the county grant partnership grant program is open now, closing September first. That's what I have. Anything for me? You're welcome.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate it, as always. Are there any additions to the agenda? I have one addition to the agenda, sir, um, is discussion and action to approve the special events application. We're hanging the Downtown Kansas City Partnership Community Day in part banner across East Main Street. Thank you very much. I'm gonna need a motion in a second for that.
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin.
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the addition is approved. We now need to, uh, a motion to approve the agenda with the addition as already stated. So, Anthony makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the agenda is approved. Mr. Sazowski, action items before council on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Discussion and action to have a solicitor review the new lease agreement with the side likewise for the use of the senior seller, that's attachment point in your package. So, please. Hold a second. Okay, Mr. Powell makes the motion, Mr. Anthony seconds. I'm glad you did that. Such a continued way. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on bond reduction requests for phase one second improvements for Lacy Park in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents in accordance with non-amendment updated six twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, attachment two in your package.
Do I hear a motion? So, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Philman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
Thank you very much, and the motion carries. Next item, please. Discussion and action to execute the agreement with guarding designs for the management and redesign of the websites pending the solicitor's review, attachment number three.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Agerton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is any, is there any discussion?
Uh, I do have a point of discussion, that I think that we should appoint, um, a design committee to help, like, facilitate the, the moving on once we get through the contact.
I would, I think that's a good idea, to have a committee of council be, uh, involved with the design, so, um, just, uh, maybe we'll point in contact with a staff person, uh, so that it's less confusing for the, for the factor.
Okay, absolutely. All right, can I, can I hear this through the committee?
That's what I was gonna recommend, for a second.
When you made, you listed two individuals that wanna work with staff, we'll have that up for the committee. Okay?
That would be the municipal community outreach committee, so you can talk, go back.
Correct. All right. That will speed things up, I hope.
It's, it's the whole, that we can go back and forth without having so many bumps.
All right, is there any other discussion on that matter? And proper movement checking in, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the motion carries with the addition of the committee looking into, yeah, the mentioned statement. All right.
Next item, uh, this one I'm gonna ask to be tabled again, engineer Penoni, or engineer Rogulski was supposed to be here tonight, uh, to discuss this, but he got deployed. Discussion and action to authorize both staff to engage Penoni engineers for road surface analysis and mapping, attachment number four. If we could table that again, please, until you get back.
Okay, we told-- All right, thank you very much. Does not require a second, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And we will wait for further information on that, Mr. Sazowski. Thank you. So, any kind of lease discussion and action to accept the drop request submitted by Sergeant Timothy Dyer?
I'll make that motion. One second.
And there's a second. That was Mr. Philman and Mr. Booker. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on a special events application for the use of Memorial Park to raise funds for Mass Cheerleaders Trip to Disney World. This event is to be held on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, with a rain date of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Hours of the event are nine A M. to three P M., attachment five.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Philman. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on a special event application for Streets of Preach to be held October sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, from ten A M. to two P M., attachment six.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
Excited, please.
Discussion and action on expenditures from all fronts for the period beginning June first of twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as listed below.
Do I hear a motion? So, please.
Talking with the bodies.
Mr. Anthony measures and Mr. Powell in seconds. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will record the vote unanimously.
And we're overpaid. Next item, discussion and action to approve the special events permit for replacement of Community Day banner, uh, across East Main Street from July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one to August ninth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agerton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion carries. Then we are now at that portion of the meeting where citizens are able to make comments. Do we have any other citizens who wish to make comment at this time? Hearing none, we move on to any other business. Before I address that, I'm gonna kinda put the solicitor on the spot. Recently, there was, uh, new movement on Act sixty-five with regard to the sunshine law. I don't know if all of you are aware of it or not, but I would like to ask him to just do a, a quick overview of that for us, um, and so that we can be up to speed. And actually, I think in my interpretation, affects staff a little bit more than it does council, but I'll let you take the floor, Mr. Cassidy.
Certainly, so, uh, Act fifty-five was, uh, signed into law, uh, the week before last by Governor Wolf, amending the Sunshine Act to, um, and the amendments to the Sunshine Act really center upon the process of developing meeting agendas for, not only for council, but your committees and every subunit within the borough, including your, um, municipal authority, uh, your planning commissions, and any other entity that's, uh, performing a governmental function. The, um, uh, I'll just give you the highlights with respect to the amendments, but the, uh, Act sixty-five requires the municipality to post the meeting agenda, um, twenty-four hours in advance, um, on your website, if, if, if the borough maintains a publicly accessible website, which I know you're, you have and you're developing. Um, furthermore, the agenda needs to be posted, uh, here in the borough office for public view, and then a copy of the agenda needs to be made available to, uh, members of the public. A lot of these things you may already be doing, but this becoming, um, codified is an absolute requirement for all municipalities, um, and all local agencies within Commonwealth. The, the idea behind these revisions or amendments to the Sunshine Act is to require the local latency to provide that transparency in performing those governmental functions to give the public advanced notice of action that may be taken at a public meeting, so they can comment by comment. Um, so, the default is that once the agenda is, is set, I think it can't be changed. So, there, you need to know exactly what that agenda's going to be at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. There are a few exceptions, however, to, to that, uh, default requirement of locking in the agenda. Uh, one is, is if there's a legitimate emergency that arises in the borough, um, that, um, if it's an emergency that is, uh, involving a clear and present danger to life or property, then council can take action even without calling public meeting. Number two, if there's any business that are legitimate, legitimately arises within that twenty-four hour window, uh, for example, an application for the, um, for the street signs, if that happened to come in today, that's something that could be added to the agenda for, for consideration. Um, the third exception is if members of the public, um, bring to the attention of council at a public meeting, uh, a concern, um, the, the, the agenda can be modified to address that concern and to take action. There are some limitations with that, however, in terms of, um, of action that does not require the expenditure of funds or have a de minimis impact on, on your budget. And then the, the fourth exception is any action or any proposed amendment to the agenda that's, uh, proposed by a member of council, in this case. But again, there are limitations in terms of what types of actions or matters can be brought for consideration that would amend the agenda in terms of expenditure of, of money or, um, any action that would have, uh, a more de minimis impact on, on your budget. So, I think we can talk about those further, um, at, at some point in time if we have any questions. A lot of this is, we're still figuring out, I'm getting a sense of, of, of where the limits are with respect to, um, the law, but, um, just want you to be aware that a lot of these changes that are, are imposed under Act sixty-five, I think you're already doing that as a matter of course anyhow, but that are going to be, uh, restrictions with respect to staff in terms of developing of the agenda moving forward.
Okay, just wanted you all to be aware, and we'll keep addressing this as we move forward.
Again, the honor is pretty much falls on the staff to ensure, and I mean, most, for most part, the only one, where my concern would come in is, is Monday night meetings, uh, on the twenty-four hour notice that we have to put up. Um, we would have to have the, everything ready to go Friday morning, basically, to post for the authority, the Harb, uh, the planning commission, most of those are Monday night meetings. So, those we would have to have ahead of time, I'm assuming, because of the, the, the weekend in there. Council, not too much, because we could do, we could post first thing Monday morning and be in that twenty-four hour timeframe. Uh, but, both the chairman of the authority and president of council have asked to have the, the agenda sent to them prior. Um, I don't, this one, I don't remember if this one was sent to you prior or not because of the holiday and the fact that we were swamped with everything else going on in the office, so, uh, but most of them are approved by the chairman or the president of those committees before they're, they're posted, so. But the, the one thing that we're just kinda fuzzy in that whole thing is the, the Monday meetings, because we have to have everything posted Friday morning before--
I mean, it, it's simply the twenty-four hour requirement, so as long as it's posted twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, if it's on a Sunday, um, not that you wanna be working on a Sunday, but it technically could be posted on a Sunday evening prior to a Monday night meeting.
When we have the ordinary, so.
Okay, I, that was, uh--
The key is, I felt like you were here to guide us in case we, you know, just step up. So, he is on the phone call, right, so.
Yep, yep. All right, so, that being said, and I'm sorry to put you in the spot there, I should've forewarned you I was gonna do that, but I figured you were prepared. You were. Uh, we'll go around, uh, Mrs. Martin, you have anything to add?
No.
Story? Mr. Sazowski?
Just real quick, uh, I mentioned in an email to, um, to people when I was talking about the, the American Recovery Fund, money that's, uh, barely been allocated, uh, potentially looking, and I mentioned it when Mr. Getman was here, the, uh, at a conference this afternoon where we're discussing a kiosk potential for outside for people paying their bills, uh, I've gotta get more detail on it, uh, it sounds like a very good opportunity, there's some quest for solicitor custody, but, uh, for the most part, uh, we have the opportunity, we have the space. I think it's, um, moving us forward, uh, and giving people the opportunity to, kinda, instead of trying to rush in here during business hours that they build, it's twenty-four-seven auto attendant, basically, outside. So, I will get more details on that as we go forward, um, and as, when we get finalized prices, we'll be able to move forward with that.
Anything else? That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
No, thank you.
Mr. Anthony? Uh, two quick questions.
Uh, two quick questions. One is, uh, well, one, one's Community Day, so, thank you, Dr. Drake, I mean, that was awesome. So Community Day is coming up, it's a month away. So I'm not, I'm not stealing your thunder, but just want to make sure we get that out there, right? So they're still looking for vendors and sponsors. It's a great event, if you've ever been, August seventh, penalty three, going to be great music, uh, lots of fun. So throw it on your calendar, and if you are a business, uh, and you'd like to participate, uh, you can, uh, see myself or Jane or the website for more information on how to be a sponsor and or a vendor. Uh, I just want to ask real quick about the trees that, uh, we talked about last time. Do you know if they've been trimmed?
No, because there's on State Road, we've got a traffic control and everything else has to be coordinated to get that done. So, and we're probably going to have to have somebody from the outside do it.
Oh.
So that's not, we can't shut down traffic on Main Street and cut trees. So.
Okay. So what's the, what's the, uh?
Well, first, we've got to see when the, they're ready to go. We've got to send out and get prices and make sure it meets our bidding criteria and all on here.
Yeah, it's a big project.
Yep.
I have a long pole with saw, and he's like. Yeah, I'm on for two, two a.m. runs if that's your plan. Strike that here. Strike that. I have a cake. I have nothing.
No one?
Nothing for me.
Booker?
Nothing.
I got nothing.
Sure.
Nothing for me? Nothing for me? Nothing, sir.
Thank you. First of all, one, a couple items, uh, I would like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Booker on his upcoming wedding. And, uh, the council is, uh, wishing you all nothing but the best.
I appreciate it. Getting married on seven, one, seven.
Seven, one, seven. That's a familiar area, too. So, that being said, we are going to adjourn to an executive session on matters of personnel with possible action to be taken. Um, and we thank all of you for your attendance.